Hi, welcome to a special March 10 Village of Buchanan meeting. This is going to be similar to a workshop. We're going to be discussing the first part of our budget, our 2020-2021 budget. As everyone is aware, April will be the first plant, Indian Point plant closing. So we wanted to start the budget process much sooner. We have been working on things for three years, but we wanted to start the budget process much sooner. So what we have tonight, we're discussing only the loss that we're facing from Entergy's. We have a pilot program. The first year loss is going to be 30%. But we'll discuss more on March 24th, our usual workshop. It's going to be solely budget. So we're also going to tape that. I think, we all think it's important that everybody understands what the process is, what's happening, where we are. And the board has done their due diligence, but we will talk more in March, March 24th about the different things that we looked at and trying to mitigate the loss. And I should have an answer by then also. There's something else that I can't discuss. It's a negotiation, but hopefully I have our answer then. So tonight, Marcus Sorano, our administrator, will be leading the discussion. He has three scenarios here, and he's going to go over each one of them, and then the board is going to have to decide which is the best scenario for the village. And the budget, we'll be working on the budget through March through April. April 9th is our budget hearing, and then the budget has to be approved by the end of April. So the budget has to be approved by May 1st. And that will go into effect June 1st of this year. So Marcus?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for reminding. Every meeting, we say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Pasquale.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and the Board, and thank you for the residents for being here. What I've been trying to work on for the last couple of days is trying to figure out what the tax impacts would be with the loss of the pilot. As the mayor said, we have a pilot, and we also have an infrastructure fund that we also receive from Entergy. So it's a two hitter that we're getting, the loss of the pilot over time, and the loss of the infrastructure over a two-year period as well. Now, what I tried to do here, this is just showing you what the entire worksheet that I'm looking at is up there on the screen right now. What I'm going to do right now is just zoom in, just to give you some details of what my, some of the assumptions are. And as the mayor said, I came up with three different scenarios. The board, the discussion with the public, decided to do something totally different. I'm just trying to give you options, what the impacts are going to be. So some of the assumptions I'm taking right now is that we're, I'm assuming that the pilots are going to be, are going to remain as provided. Entergy provides, provides us with a schedule of pilot payments over the next few years. But according to Entergy, the pilot does expire in two years, because according to the law, when Entergy stops producing electricity, according to the law, they cannot pay a pilot. So we have to, there's draft legislation that Stephanie, myself, the mayor, the town, the school wrote to help pass the state legislature to continue the pilot beyond the two years. So I'm going to give you a worst-case scenario in case the pilot does disappear earlier than anticipated. So the first thing is the worst.
Marcus, I just want to mention one thing, I'm sorry. So people are hearing pilot. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, and that was an agreement since 2000, when Entergy came in, there was a pilot agreement that was negotiated.
Yep.
And the school is involved, the town is involved, the county, so in the Village of Buchanan. Just for some background information, I'm sorry to.
No, that's right, and the background information too. But originally, when Entergy, well, first Pazni and Condes owned the plant, there was no legislation to tax a piece of property that way. They said they would tax these things. So with the village board and school, they passed state legislation to allow to enter into our pilot agreement. When our pilot agreement was made, it sunset when they stopped producing electricity. So that's a little caveat that we have to be worried about, to make sure we either get the legislation to pass, that's step one, and then step two is negotiate a new pilot. And the hopes are that this is hopefully the worst-case scenario, they might be able to get more. But my assumptions are that pilot continues as provided by Entergy to me. That's one thing. Also, that pilot continues beyond two years, under current state legislation, pilot will stop in two years. I don't know if everybody heard about the cessation fund as well? If you don't, I can explain that a little bit.
I think since this is televised and the purpose is for people that watch as well, we should explain what that is.
Okay, there was, again, special state legislation passed from the state that any time a nuclear plant shuts down, there's a fund that's set aside from the state to help reduce the impact to the municipalities. And it starts at, from the year that you lose 30% or more, then it starts at 80%, it scales from 80, 70, sixty, over eight or nine years until it becomes zero. So that way, you can increase your taxes a little bit at a time, which is one big hit in one year. Again, that cessation fund is set up by the state legislature. Some of the assumptions, the mayor's been attending a couple of meetings on that as well, is that even the cessation fund is actually working out there right now? There are two issues. One is, there's only enough money in the cessation fund to last for two or three years. That's number one. But this includes all the nuclear plants in the state of New York that might be shutting down, and the amount of money lost between the school district, ourselves, the county. So right now, there's only enough money for two or three years. So that's the point, number one. The PSC has passing state legislation, or trying to pass state legislation, to find another funding source to help pay, actually put more money in cessation fund over time to continue these payments that we're talking about. Don't forget, we're talking about a couple hundred thousand to a million. The school is talking about tens of millions of dollars. So all that money comes from the same source. So that's number two. Number three is, the cessation fund also has a sunset issue. That cessation fund, it's on the state legislation, also sunsets in two years. So the issue is, is the state going to renew the cessation funds for a couple more years? So again, there's a lot of unknowns here, and I want to make sure everybody understands what's going on, I'm being transparent and everything. The mayor is fighting very hard to pass all these laws. She was telling me to stand in gale off and everything, to try to get the legislation passed, to make sure we have the funding sources to continue this over time. But also, there's a funding issue that has to take place as well. So that's the cessation fund. So I'm assuming the cessation fund will continue beyond the two or three years. The next part is the taxable value. Our taxable value is this number, I'm going to zoom in a little bit more now, because I want to make sure everybody sees this. Hopefully, everybody can see this. This, this 7,113,000, that's our taxable value. To raise money, you take that number, divide it by the amount of money you need to raise, it gives you a tax rate and tax rate increase. That number has been pretty constant in the village, as it increased, because you know, there's not that much commercial, you're not building big commercial sites and that. So that assessment rule changes day to day. So if your expenses go up and your revenues go down, you can only assess, you can only tap off that base assessment rule. So if that went up by a million dollars or something happened, everybody's taxes goes down. It's a, it's a number you use to divide to calculate your taxes. So that number has stayed constant. So my assumption is that number should remain constant for seven or eight years, until the pilot cessation funds ends. But if any building goes on, that number goes up, the impacts go down. So we have to remember that. So if there's any potential development, that will help the situation. Okay, but we're not there yet, but again, I'm assuming that. The taxable value is how much we raise in taxes. So if you take this number, divide it into 7 million, you get .00312, you times it by 1,000, it comes out $321. That's the calculation that happens.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Just want to ask you what you prefer. If there's a question related to what you're talking?
Anything.
Should I, can I jump in, or do you want me to wait till you're done?
I'd rather, everybody, maybe I have to, mayor, however you want to do it.
You sure? It's okay to do that?
Yeah.
You prefer that? So can I go back to that taxable value?
Yes.
If you took every individual property in the village that has an assessed value and added them all up, that's the number you would get?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Yep. Now, again, I want to be totally transparent. If you have an, you have a veteran's exemption or age exemption that reduces that number, that's the taxable value. That's an assessed value, which is assessment, but you might have an exemption against that. So this is your taxable value that we use to calculate your tax rate. Okay? So the 2,284,000, that's the levy we have to raise, that's how much taxes we collect to pay all our bills. Okay? The 321 is the per thousand rate. So you have your assessment at home, that's why, that's why I want to explain it. Your assessment, you times it by that $321, that comes out to how much taxes you pay. Okay? Last year's tax rate increase was 12.98%, almost a 13% increase. Again, just for purposes of, that way you know what the impacts are over time. All right? The other information I want to let you know is, so again, this was the original levy, the 2,280. Now, we get into the details. This is, hopefully, let me, it can make it a little bit bigger. I see some people squinting out there, so let me see if I can make it a little bit bigger here. And now I could always zoom out.
Sorry, I don't have copies, but we knew we were going to project.
Yeah, I got some, I got some extra copies, if anybody, you want to give some out?
Yeah.
If anybody wants to have a couple of copies, everybody wants to take one.
I have an extra.
No, that's all, that's three different scenarios.
Yeah, there's three scenarios.
Okay. I said we don't need three to share.
Okay, so I'm at the.
Colleen.
So what I'm trying to show here is, we have the original levy that I talked about was 2,284. That's the pilot that we actually received in the current year, 2,700,000. That's the pilot that we got from Entergy. The 273 is the infrastructure, the infrastructure grant or funds that we collect from Entergy as well. So our total amount of revenue received from Energy on Tax Levy is $5,322,000. So now, we get into some of the details. So what I'm going to show here, I actually broke it up into three little segments. The first segment is, I should show you the pilot cessation fund and what the difference is between pilot and cessation fund, what the losses are. The next little block of information is what the tax rate increases would be over time. And the last one at the bottom is just show what the total revenue would be, and make sure everything balances out. So I'm going to start with the top one first. So let's start with the top one. The top one is the worst one. The 2020, the 2021 fiscal year, which is the June 1st fiscal year that we're starting next, that we're starting in a couple of months.
Right.
Now, don't forget, this does not include your regular tax rate increases based for operating expenses, expenses and revenue. That's a separate topic that we're going to discuss in a couple of weeks. This is just the pilot impacts and cessation fund impact losses. So the pilot goes, the pilot, the pilot goes from two, on the top left-hand side, you see 2,764 as shaded. That's, that's the.
Where are you? Where's that 2 million?
Right here.
2,764 was up in the top.
Got you, okay.
I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. So I'm just going to zoom in for this fiscal, this one year, so we can see what the impacts are. So now, the new pilot is going to be 2,300,000. It's a loss of $367,000.
Question?
Yes.
Okay. So the way the pilot is written, the first year, there's a reduction of 30%. And the pilot is pretty much split between the two plants. So if the total is 2,764,000, each plant is roughly 1,380,000, and I get 30% of that, somewhere around 450,000, so it doesn't gel with the 367.
And what I'll do is, let me show you this. I want to be totally transparent with you guys, so let me show you this.
Just, I want to.
Yep, yep, I'm going by exactly.
I want to eat a thing with a lollipop. Because I see them on American Idol, they hold the mic right up to their mouth. So my calculation could be wrong?
Yeah, I'm just going, I'm going exactly what was given to me from Entergy. So I'm going to give you this, again. This is for the Village of Buchanan.
Well, if Entergy wants to calculate it in such, in a way that's advantageous to us, we'll gladly use their calculations.
Right, right.
But.
Yeah, so I'm using their, there's, see on the bottom left, on the bottom, if you, this one you don't have. I'm just going by exactly what the pilot reduction according to their calculation is going to be.
Oh, so there, that's exactly what I said, 1,380, 382 per plant, and then.
Divide it by three.
And then, and then indeed, they're showing, in the first year, that it goes down to 9, 987.
Right.
Here. And, and that's about a 390, that's what you're showing. But if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken, the pilot is written as 30% down the first year, which 30% of that would, did I calculate wrong?
No, no, 30% of, or 15% of the whole pilot.
30%, 30% of that would be, maybe my calculators, I think I'm wrong. Is that, is that, is that a reduction of 30%? What's 30% of 1382 would be, I think, I think.
You know what, because we've always talked about the $3 million, so this is 2.764718.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So half of that, and then 30% of that.
Well, 30% of that would be .3 times that, which would be 300, 3.
414.
414?
707 is basically.
Okay, 414, okay. So, so it's a, it's a, it's a little more than the 987. Okay, so, whatever. I mean, that's, let's go ahead with the figure they gave us for now, and if it turns out, you know, just, we want to make sure that they're.
Absolutely.
I would, I would trust that they know what they're doing.
Yes.
Especially if it works in our favor.
Well, that's, yeah, but it has been.
All right, this is going to be televised, but we have to black it out on TV.
Oh, okay, so the calculation is a loss of 367.
367, so a new amount now. Okay, the first year, like I explained, the cessation fund doesn't kick in until you lose 30% or more of the entire.
See, sorry.
30%.
It's a 20?
Yeah, it's 20 or more. Because then it starts at, your payback starts, your payback, your bridge, really, it's a bridge. It's 80, the first year is 80%. You get reimbursed 70, and it goes down 10% for seven years.
And that's the.
That's the cessation fund. But it kicks in when there's a 20% loss.
So are these numbers under cessation?
Yeah, 20%. Yeah, this is.
That's the amount we're projecting to get from that fund?
Yeah, and what I.
In those years?
And just to show you again, the state was nice enough to work with me, to provide me, I'm going to show you this, we don't have this now, but that's, that's part of my calculations too, is.
Right.
They, the state provided this worksheet that I worked with the state on, that shows you this is what the pilot payments are going to be, they estimate what the loss is going to be, this is, it doesn't kick in to 20, 20% or 10%, whatever the number is. So you see, the first year doesn't kick in, which is the year we're in right now, doesn't kick in next year, because it will lessen to 20%. According to them, that's what they were telling me, they had to be 20.
Yeah, I.
That's why we're at 13%, that's why it doesn't kick in. It doesn't kick into 21, 22, and this is the amount we get from grant.
Yeah, so it's that maximum grant as a percent of tax laws.
That's correct.
So, so this depends, the maximum grant depends on the continual funding by the state.
Correct.
Which is an unknown.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So far, they have funded it every year?
For the other, the other.
For their plants, yes.
Coal plants and, and whatever. It's not just nuclear plants, it's coal plants, whatever energy-producing plants.
Plants are great.
And it's a single state fund, or is it a separate fund for each?
It's one fund for everything.
Okay.
For everybody. So I don't want to confuse her, but there's whole bunch of different spreadsheets that tie into my spreadsheet.
Right, right, no, that's, that's fair enough.
All right.
We don't want to leave here with a degree in accounting.
I do want to check on that second year.
Sure, you'll go through that.
Make sure that's.
Again, this is.
Because think about it, it's, it's unit two, and unit three kicks in next year, so that should, that should be the threshold for the 20%. So we need to recheck their numbers.
Yes, I'll double check.
Can you go back to that state chart for one second?
Sure, absolutely.
No, no. Can you scroll over to that maximum? So it's showing the maximum for last year and this year is zero, and then next year's budget, 80%. Okay.
Yep, and then it goes to 70, 60, 50.
Okay, so that's where these cessation numbers come from.
Correct, correct. And the other part that's added in, well, it, what's the good news when they do the cessation fund, it's based on your base year, which is good. They're taking 80% of your base year, even though the pilot's going down every year, they're still going back to the base year. And that's why it's interesting, one year, we actually get more money back than we would normally get because of the way the cessation fund works in the pilot.
Interesting.
I would explain that to you as well, too. All right, so, let's get back here. So year one, 2021. So first year, we lose $367,000, the cessation fund does not kick in. So the new amount is 3,900, so we lose 367,000. If you follow the chart going down, people have it out there, we also lose the infrastructure amount, which is 135,000, so we lose that as well. So first year, we're looking at a rate increase, a rate increase of $70.72, that's the rate based on $341 that we talked about originally, which is a 22% increase in your taxes. So whatever you pay in your taxes, for village tax only, take 22% of that, that's where your new tax is going to be. The average tax bill, when I looked in my calculation, and again, people can be higher or lower, but the average tax bill is $1,400. So I'm trying to say what the impact would be on the household that pays $1,400 in village tax. That would be a $308 increase for the year, or $26 a month.
May I again?
Absolutely.
On your chart here, yours says average tax bill 1708. So when you say 1,400, you're talking about the median tax bill?
Right, that's right down, 1,400.
Because I'm right around the median.
Okay.
But it looks like the average.
That's the average, mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's the extent of my accounting knowledge, the difference between median and average.
Yes, yes.
Median is the tax number of, that 50% of the homes would be above and 50% would be below.
Correct.
As opposed to the average.
Average.
You know, an average could be thrown off by very high and very low tax values.
I was going to do a median too, but I thought people would get confused about that, so I just used the average.
Well, luckily, luckily, we have a very bright populace who can understand these accounting.
Difference. So what I'm doing down here, what I'm doing down here in the last part of the spreadsheet, you'll see what I mean, what I'm going to do with this in my next spreadsheet when we get into it. So here is just the same calculation, just showing that with the increase of the taxes, the way I described it, and the loss of the revenue due to pilot cessation fund, we're still, we're still raising the same amount of money, the $5,300,000, just as a balancing that I'm using for the final part. And this will come, this will become more important later on when I go to my other, one of my other spreadsheets. So this spreadsheet just shows you what the impact in the first year. Then, what's interesting, if we go to the second year, which is very interesting, again, the pilot goes, the pilot goes down from 2,300,000 to 1,500,000. The loss of, the loss of the pilot is $814,000. Now, from 367,000, we lose 814,000. The good news is, cessation fund is there, the cessation fund actually pays us for $946,000. So we actually have a positive cash flow in the second year of $131,000, positive. Now, it's interesting, now when you get down to the bottom, in the middle part of the spreadsheet, that year, we're looking at almost a 0% tax rate increase. I forgot about that 6 cents, $6.01, so we're actually talking about .30, 30 basis points tax rate increase in the second year.
Can you explain why if we're going to have more money coming in, there'll actually be any tax increase?
Yes, because we lost the cessation fund. We lost the other $138,000 in the cessation fund. The cessation fund was kicking in two years.
In the infrastructure fund, you're referring to.
I'm sorry, infrastructure.
In the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah. So the second year, so it wasn't for the infrastructure loss, we'll actually be looking at a tax rate decrease in the second year.
Good.
Okay? So, so what we see is, something I don't like to see personally, as an accountant, again, it's a board decision. So what you go see, you're going to see peaks and valleys. You'll see a big increase, and then when you go to the next year, 2022, 23, now you see a 16% increase again. And then a 16% increase, everybody has the spreadsheets out there. I'm going to, we can get into the details, but I want to focus on this. So we got 16, 16, then almost 11, then it goes up to 18 and 12. So you can see, the percentage rate increase is going up and down, but it's based on the cessation fund and the pilot, how much you lose every year. So.
May I?
Absolutely.
Just for the people watching, sorry, for the people watching, just explain one, the basic thing about the pilot. The first year, the plant closes, and Indian Point 2 would close in next month. And we will lose 30% of the pilot the first year. The second year, we lose another 30%, which would mean a total of 60. Next year, Indian Point 3 closes, and we will, and that's the first year of that one closing, so we'd lose 30% of that. So in, so in this year's budget, the only loss is 30% of the income from Indian Point 2. Next year, we would lose 30% from Indian Point 3, as well as another 30, a total of 60% loss for Indian Point 2. So these numbers showing the loss from the pilot will reflect this as, as the plants are phased out and they pay less and less taxes.
That's good, and let me, and that's, and just to piggyback on that, so like I said, the pilot, if you overlook, follow the spreadsheet, first year, we lose 367, next year, we use 814, and next year, we're at 848. And then we lose 440 until the pilot expires in 2025, and then the pilot is gone. Hopefully, the cessation fund does continue, and that's the next one. You see the cessation fund is zero, 946, 1,400, 1,480, 12, 1,235. So the pilot continues until year, the last year of the pilot, of the cessation will be 2027, 28. 28, 29 will be the year where the village doesn't receive any more funding, either from the pilot or cessation fund. Absolutely.
It's a profit to value, so how does they, so what do you think, there's profit and tax to be generated from the settlement? Right? So does it go to zero, or does it?
Goes to 10% of the roughly 3 million, so it's approximately, it's a little under to, under, a little under 300,000.
Although with the slight increases, it'll be about 3. But that means, the current pilot is a little under 3 million, so 10% of that. However, there's a lot of unknowns, as the administrator was saying, that the, technically, right now, you cannot carry on the pilot once the plant closes, but there's legislation being put forth to change that so we can continue the pilot. Even if that's, would you like to go further?
No, go ahead, I'll comment after.
That it's very possible that at any point, we could switch from some form of assessment instead of a pilot. Pilot is what you do instead of assessing a property.
That's an option.
And that's an option, that also is depending on some other legislation, can we tax the nuclear storage casks? So there's unknowns going forward, based on tax laws that are, that local legislators are helping us with and, you know, advocating for right now, and the mayor is very involved with this stuff, so.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't sure. You can see where I put it.
Yep, and the whole thing, and the whole thing, that's why, if you follow the pilot Yep, and the whole thing, and the whole thing, that's why, if you follow the pilot all the way down, the base could be $293,000 forever, but we don't know how far that's going to go. With the pilot arrangement given to me by Energy, states it ends in 24, 25. That's what they believe is going to happen. That's why we have a negotiation in the pilot.
Yeah, because legally, they can't continue.
Because if the pilot ends, then we have to, then we have to assess them, and like any other business, they can file tax certs, and then we don't know what their value is going to be. Most of it, if they actually decommission, it'll be vacant land, and they're going to say that property is not worthless, so then we have to go into, you know, tax search or process.
And we have to be careful with that, too, because if anybody knows about Bowline in Rockland, they did, when the Bowline plant was an energy-producing plant, and they went down, they didn't have a pilot, and so the town went and just assessed them. And yes, they got millions and millions of dollars, but they filed tax certs.
Yep, every year.
And in the end, it was a huge hit to the community, because now it's like the tax cert said, oh, yeah, you over, you overtaxed them, so now you have to pay that back. So we don't want that either, you know, and, you know, so everybody understands, if we do something like that, you can't just put money away, like, we can only, I think, was it about 10%? So if it's 10%, our budget, budget $6 million, you can only save $600,000. So if you end up getting millions of dollars, like, because if you do something like that, the state feels that you're overtaxing people if you have more than that 10%.
Sorry, let me just get that straight, I think. So you can't appraise them, then take all that extra money and stack it away in case you lose your court case? If you lose your court case, you do not have that extra money, if you're only about 10% of it. So it's kind of like, it's a pretty big gamble to take.
That's correct.
That's why you want to negotiate.
And the other thing I want to add, this is, what we're going through right now is the worst-case scenario, right?
No, this is, this is the current case, but this is, I'm going to give you my recommendation. This is in the middle.
Okay.
This is in the middle.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So the next one I'm going to give you, right, so the next one I'm going to give you is the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario, that's, I've got page number two.
The cessation fund.
Correct. So this one's, is, is, is cessation fund ends and the pilot ends in two years if everything happens. So I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit, so everybody can see this.
While you're zooming in, can I just make one other comment? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Absolutely.
We talked about, I know you talked about the infrastructure. When we made our last pilot arrangement with the town, with the school, the village was involved, the county was involved, that was a couple of years ago, at the 11 and 1/2 hour, I was fortunate enough to negotiate an infrastructure agreement with them, which was $250,000, and we would get 2%, you know, increase each year. So that is going away, too. So when we're talking about the loss of the infrastructure, that was, that additional agreement solely for the village that we were able to negotiate.
So here is what I consider the worst-case scenario, the pilot ends in two years, the cessation fund, money rises up. So first year remains the same, there's no change in the first year. The second year remains constantly the same. The third year is when everything really drops. You're looking at a, almost a 26% rate, tax rate increase, then an 84% increase, but then it goes to zero, because you already, you actually caught up faster, because you made up all the losses faster. So, but you're looking at, you're looking at a much bigger increase much faster versus over time. You're still going to raise the same amount of money at the end, it just, this way, you just get there faster, but you have to increase taxes much quicker to everybody. So this is what I consider the worst-case scenario. Is that what you know what's going on? Because again, we have, they haven't passed the state legislation yet, I'm nervous about everything, so I want to make sure everybody knows what the options are, okay?
You're coming up, you're coming up with the same number at the end.
At the end.
But, but the difference is, the, the first one we looked at is that you have some of your own money for, for years where, where the state isn't getting it.
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct. So the last one that I want to talk to you guys about is what I would recommend, and people have different ideas, so we can go anywhere in between the two. So the most important aspect here, the top part of the spreadsheet looks exactly the same. The middle part and the bottom is what I would like you to focus on. Again, year one, can, can you see this? Do you want to make it bigger?
This is the third page.
There's a third page, yes. So year 2020 to 2021, it means exactly the same, same tax rate increase. The second year, remember we talked about the first, it was like almost a 0% tax rate increase because the cessation fund is higher? That year, I'm recommending that we raise taxes, we raise another $275,000. Let me tell you why. That'll be a 12% increase in the second year. And that, and then what we, what I'm recommending is then you take that $275,000 and you lever it off for the next couple of years to keep the tax rate about 11 or 12% increase. We still get to the same number at the end, but you're using that money to offset the tax rate increase in the future years. So instead of seeing a chart going like this, which you're still going to get to the same point, you see a chart going like this over time. So it's a levering off of the taxes. Again, it's just a recommendation, whatever the public and the board wants to do, at the end of the day, we still got to get to the same point, it just, it just determines how to get there. So instead of seeing a 0% tax rate increase in the second year, or a 1, I'm recommending to keep it at 12, so therefore, we can level, level off the tax rate increase for the next eight or nine years.
So in other words, let's take down the road, that we do, the legislation would be successful about taxing the spent fuel. Then that would just, in all three cases, it would just lower all three cases?
Correct.
Or it would affect one more than the other?
It would affect, if we, this, for example, if, we're talking about next, we're talking about next fiscal year, well, it's going to, we had a year to make a decision, because the first year is going to, we're going to have the same impact.
Doesn't matter, right.
The budget I'm working on is not going to change at all. Next year's budget, if we have the cessation, if the cessation fund, we know it's funded, and we get a new pilot, or we're able to tax the fuel, then that $275,000 can go away, and now we got additional revenue to set it off. Or we got a new development that comes in, that can help set it off. So there's a lot of other things that could happen, it could be positive, but I'm saying, let's say, think about worst-case scenario, if none of that happens, I would recommend raising $275,000, so therefore, we can balance it out, equalize the tax rate increase over the next eight or nine years.
So, but the, the assessment for the fuel rods and then the assessment for the land, those are two different sections.
Correct.
And if we do the assessment for the land and get into a fight on, on, on that number, that's, all of that is still on the table.
That's correct.
Well, it's good that none of this has to be decided this year.
Correct.
This year is the same in every scenario.
That's correct.
So the good thing is, it gives us another year to see which of these wild cards, quote-unquote wild cards, materializes, or what, you know, so we might be able to make a more educated decision next year.
Correct.
Is, is there any kind of state mechanism where utilities in the past have gone, you know, gone out of business or whatever, and the amount that that community could set aside, been raised?
No.
It's always flat.
10%.
Yeah, what happened in other communities is they, you know, cut services by whatever they could, and then raised taxes to make up the difference. That's what everybody else has done.
Marcus, I didn't want to interrupt, you finished?
Yeah, no, that was just a question.
The 275 you're talking about would go into the, into the fund for?
Over to the fund balance, and that's fund balance, so I don't want to go, I don't want to go restricted, I don't want to accord it a tax stabilization account, because then you got to hope these laws will go to the general fund balance, but a resolution will be adopted by the village board, say that $275,000 can only be used to offset future tax rate increases, because then what happened is, then we could decide the next year, like, okay, my scenario has $100,000 coming out, if you follow my chart, at 22, 23, I got $100,000 coming off, another 100. You might say, I want to take 150.
Wouldn't that be the same if it was in the tax stabilization fund?
Tax stabilization fund.
What, what does that limit you on?
It limits you on regards to the way the law states, is a percentage of your, a percentage of your overall fund bal, of your, of your budget has to be used for the tax stabilization fund. And I talked to the state about this, and he says, you are restricting your fund balance.
Okay.
So that was, instead of you getting into there, try to show the state controllers' office how you're calculating this number and what you're going to use for, just dump it in your regular fund balance. And then we know for accounting purposes, and you know, that that money can only be used for the future year payments of this, of sort of reduction due to the pilot loss over the next couple of years. So you follow my chart.
Right.
And let me just add something before I forget, when you get down to the bottom chart, it just showing you how that $275,000 is used at the bottom. At the end of the nine years, we have $25,000 left over. So that's the closest I was able to get over time, it was cumulative over time.
Okay.
So I would suggest, if next year, we're in the same boat, and we still look at the same number, a resolution, we're going to raise taxes, and that raise taxes, that money goes into the fund balance dedicated specifically to a reduction of, for reducing the impact of taxes over time.
I had advocated for many years now for the tax stabilization reserve fund, which we, we did, we do have it, we, I had wanted to put in more, but the board, the board did put some money in there.
Yes.
I don't, I think we have under $100,000 in there.
Yeah.
You know, I, I was looking to put $100,000 a year.
Right.
And I only liked that because it was only, could be used for offsetting future taxes.
Correct.
As opposed to if you had a financial emergency, you could, you know, you could take money out of the fund balance for other things.
Correct.
So I liked that in a way.
And we can accomplish the same thing, what I've done in other places, do a fund balance policy.
Yeah.
So I would like to, but, you know.
But a resolution might achieve the same thing.
Exactly, absolutely. And with a fund balance policy, actually adds more weight to that as well, because Moody's standards report is like a fund balance policy, the state controllers' office makes sure you meet your fund balance policy. So we can work with that, but we have to build a fund balance first, too, on top of that.
Let me, let me ask you, I'm looking at these figures here in the, in the second column, and the cessation fund is going to pay $946,000, and the loss of the pilot, $114,000. Now, I'm not an accountant, definitely not.
Wait, which column are you looking, which year?
That's $140,000 difference.
Which year you looking at?
Then what, the second column, 20, 20, 21, 20, 22.
Okay.
And you have, the loss of the pilots, $814,000, and the cessation fund, it will give 946, so that's, we're $140,000 in the plus column. I, I don't understand where you're getting the 275 from then.
No, no, if you go down to the bottom, the, what it says, additional revenue, in the next chart, the 275, can you see in the middle?
The bottom chart.
The, the middle chart, the middle chart, the 275?
2021, up at the top.
27, yeah.
That 275 is the additional raised in taxes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, the top, I see.
Yeah, so what I'm seeing here.
I see what you mean, yeah, right, okay, yeah.
So you see here, that, here, I want to show, do you see the 12.34 tax rate increase?
Right, right, I get, I get now, yeah, yeah.
In the previous chart, it was a 0 tax rate increase.
I got you, yeah, I got you.
Okay, just one other question, and then I'll try to stop talking for a minute. How does that $275,000 from a 12% increase offset what in the other chart shows a 25.95% chart in 2020, 20, 25.95% increase in 2022, and then 84.7% increase in 2023?
Which chart are you talking about?
I'm talking about the.
The best scenario?
You're looking at the number one?
The scenario, the worst-case scenario chart, which would mean if.
Yeah, let's go back, let me ask you, on the worst-case scenario, in the worst-case scenario where the pilot is going, the 275 is not in there, that's the worst-case scenario. Compare that one to the first chart, that's what you want to compare it to.
Okay.
Compare the first to the third, that's what you want to compare it to.
Okay, so the, so you're saying that that 275 would enable us just to even out the increases from year to year?
Correct. And you see that, if you follow the 275 line across, you see the minus 100, minus 100, so what happened?
Oh, there's your contributions there, I see.
Correct, so, so 275 goes in one year, the next year, I'm taking 100 of that 275 to reduce taxes.
Okay.
And so on down the line.
Maria, did you want to say something? I know you have that fund.
Are you naming? Oh, okay, I'm next then.
Well, Marcus, in, in his third-case scenario, has, has, that's what he did with the 275. The only thing is, when we discussed it, I know Nick was interested in it, not all the board was interested in doing that, because then we got feedback from other residents that they didn't want to pay ahead, like, pay ahead on the taxes, because we really didn't have a complete clear picture of where we were still going to end up. We've been working, we've basically, we've been working on this day for years since the announcement, and there's been a lot of different things that have been worked on along the way, but now we're here.
I always thought it was a good idea to keep the money that potentially could go back.
Rainy day fund.
It's just like, it's just like, you know, you're going to put all the money away.
Rainy day fund.
Right. And it's, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money to spend, and it's probably going to stay on the line a little bit.
No, I, I under, yeah.
But there's a lot of people who feel, a lot of people felt, I want to keep my money, I don't want you people, meaning the government, keeping it.
Right, so adding on that.
Two different schools of, two schools of thought, yeah.
And adding up to that, again, I'm looking at government, and I'm looking at the taxpayers who are going to be here for the, for nine, 10 years, hopefully. If somebody believes I'm going to move out here in a year, then it might say, I don't want my taxes to go up $275,000, because I'm not going to be here three years from now. Again, that's the community discussion you want to have. So you can have a 0% increase two years from now, or a 12% increase, and then that offset future year taxes. Again, that's community discussion the board has to do. I'm going to work out the numbers any way you guys want it, you just got to let me know what you want.
Well, we did a sentiment survey right when the plant was announced its closing, and asked people how they felt about the tax increases, when would you like, you know, and kind of, and it was a survey we got a little, you know, a little flack for, because it wasn't, it was kind of rushed, it wasn't well worded, but, but the gist of it was, it asked people, do you want to spread out your tax increases? Would you like to see the tax increases come earlier and spread them out? Would you like it all at once, when the bleep hits the fan?
Right.
And it was kind of a split thing, and I'll, I'll find that, I have that at home, I, I didn't think of it, but I'll, I'll pull it out, but we already did get gauge from about 160 people or so that responded, what the sentiment was on, all at once, spread it out. I'll, I'll try to remember, and I'll bring that next question up. I won't try to remember.
That's what, that's what.
I'll write it down, so I do remember.
That's what I did here.
We all know it's going to come eventually.
Yeah.
Gradual increase.
Exactly, so what.
I remember you were for it.
So what it, what it comes out to this point is, I want to make sure that, like, we're still looking at a 20, a little bit of a 22% increase next year, that's going to happen. Plus on top of that is the regular tax rate increase is going to go up as well, you know, salary increases, housing.
Right.
That's going to be on top of this number, there is no choice this year. Then next year is when we actually can start talking a little bit earlier about how, how you want to handle it next year, so then we'll have a better handle.
So my understanding is that the fund is really slated to end in 2025?
Yes.
So if there's anyone who has, I would think we want that before the next meeting? Because these don't reflect that, this is.
For the cessation fund?
Cessation fund is going to be 22, 23. I don't, I think there's legislation.
Yes, there's legislation that's just being introduced, because the cessation fund.
Sun sets in two years.
Yeah. It, we've been working with the state task force, they know that they have to fund it, but before, it was always funded by taxpayer dollars. And this year's budget in the state, as we know, I mean, we have a tough budget, they're like 6-point billion, 6-point something billion in the hole.
Deficit.
So what their thought was, originally, they were funding it through the regular budget, through taxpayer dollars, they're trying to find another funding mechanism through, basically, almost kind of through the ratepayers.
Correct.
And through the, the other energy-producing facilities in the state. So instead of it coming out from the taxpayer, they're trying to fund it a different way.
And we all, we also have to be cognizant of what's going on with the virus thing. It's, from a financial point, people aren't spending money, because they're at home, so their, so their sales tax and things like that, the revenue, you may have to, everybody in the state may have to increase more because of the downturn in sales tax.
That's correct.
And I also wonder, not, and Marcus, maybe this is more of an accounting thing, if you can, we speak to a little bit of the, the rate percent increase?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one thirty-two, one thirty-two, but the last one's one twenty-nine, but yet it still goes up fourteen percent on average.
Uh, which chart are you looking at?
Well, the last one gives, gives me a little bit better, are they all compounded, and is it compounded because of, so does this steady state actually get us kind of a better place?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm recommending, because by, if you're looking at my chart with the two seventy-five, that benefit carries over a number of years in the future, that helps reduce the tax rate increase as well over time, because this, because your new tax, your new levy is actually higher in the base year, and then you're compounding the increase over time. The most important thing is that we have to get to the, this bottom number here. That's what the average tax bill is going to, is going to increase by, by, in the nine years. You're looking at increasing taxes of three thou-, about three thousand dollars, for the average taxpayer.
Yeah, right. So what if you took this best-case scenario and ran it without the cessation fund after twenty twenty-five or something?
Which is the best-case scenario of these, the one that you recommend?
The, the-
The one you recommend with the, with the two seventy-five on the-
Correct, correct.
Like, I don't know if best case, you know, if the real best-case scenario does eliminate the cessation fund after twenty twenty-five, but still uses your kind of steady state increase.
Yeah, the cessation fund, the cessation fund act ends in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that's the last year, so the payment of five fifty-two.
That's if it continues to get funded.
Correct, but, and the state chart that I showed you before does carry it over to that year, because that's what the state legislation says. So I, again, assuming it's funded and extended to the year, again, if anything changes, all the bets are off. But again, hopefully by, in a couple of months, we know, have a better answer. The good news, I agree with Nick, is that it doesn't affect our current year's budget. If we know within the next six months, eight months, where we stand, then I can plug in those numbers, and we know six months in advance what the, what the impacts are going to be.
But I think it's important that the, the community, the, the high school community, the village, the town, I, I think we need to start putting pressure on the, on the governor, because this has to happen, it just has to happen.
Is, yeah.
It wasn't our fault that the plant closed, that was his decision, that was Riverkeeper, so, you know what?
I, I also would just like to make a question, um, there are plenty of folks, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's hard to turn it, but, for argument's sake, let's say sixty-five plus, who might be very savvy, like, watch this may be able to run on, if there are enough people in the village that don't have that kind of access or even know where to begin. Like, I would like to recommend some sort of short version of this, maybe not that specific, but if you're kind of going into the calendar.
I, I, that's a great idea.
Be sent out.
I'm alw-, I'm always a fan of a separate mailing, because people, people, if you get a separate mailing about something, you're more likely to look at it than if it's lumped in or something, and everybody doesn't use the social media.
I just really hope-
That's a good, a good recommendation.
That people are paying attention, they're, you know what, because I've had coff- Uh, yeah, I know, because we send things out in the mail, and, oh, I didn't see that in the flyer, I, I've had coffee with the mayor, and I've had it over the last couple of years, I kind of, I, I kind of gave up on it, because I'd get two, three people. You know, that was my opportunity to talk one-on-one with people and tell them, you know, and answer their questions, and I got two to three people. So that's why we all thought it was important to start this budget process so much sooner, because we do want input, we want feedback from the residents, and I hope somebody watches this tonight, and, you know, call us, you know, send us an email, call Marcus, you know, we're more than happy to, any suggestions, any thoughts, any comments, you know, we're open to everything here.
And, and thank you, this is, this is tremendous, thank you very much.
I'd just like to add, and your suggestion is excellent, to get out some sort of simplified thing, I agree with you totally on that. I'd like to see something from the school district, because, yeah, you know, let's face it, I mean, for all of us who live here, we pay the ta-, whatever the big tax bill is, and the reality is, the school tax is the big one. And, uh, it's, it's good, like, the mayor said, we're having the interaction here and find out what the community wants, and how things are going, and we have a great manager now who's giving us different ways. I hear nothing from the school district, I don't know.
Nobody tells you?
No, and, and, quite frankly, I have been to many, many meetings about the closing of Entergy, and the, the head of the school district sits there and looks at his phone all the time. Doesn't hardly even partake in the meetings, so I, I don't know what's going on there, and I, if, that's what really scared me.
Um, Cheryl?
I just want, as president of Buchanan Seniors, if either Marcus or somebody would like to come to any of our meetings, and, you know, just, maybe just give them a little preview, I don't know if doing this whole president-
Uh, yeah. I think for, you're right, Colleen's right, I think it's a little, little much. Yeah, simple, yeah, yeah.
Must be kind of better, you know.
When it's more, when it's more finalized.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Every year and a half, people have been telling me what my taxes are going to be, and I'm like, where on earth do you want to be?
Yeah, where do you get those, yeah, where do you get those numbers, yeah?
Yeah, could I also-
A lot of our residents may fall in that similar category, just in general, people are busy, and they wait to get a bill, regardless of age or status of information. I think it's time, you have little kids at home, you may be putting your efforts into just getting them today, and making sure they're paid and fed before you fall asleep, right? So as a matter of an entire community, I think there's an awful lot of people that would love a very simple sanction, and I love this, by the way, so thank you very much. It'd be incredibly helpful, and I almost enjoy it, I know that's a little weird, but you know.
Okay. You know, Jeremy, do you think, and, and Colleen, do you think people would come if we had a more, like, close intimate meeting, even if it's on a Saturday? You know, everybody's so busy, and I get that, you know, especially if you have young kids, it's, like, you're all over the place.
I was surprised that you'd be here today.
All right, I, I just, you know, I just want everyone to understand clearly what's happening, you know, we, we do, the board wants it.
To your question about the, the school board, I think if you reach out to Superintendent Hockrider or his office, they put out something very similar to this, they did it for the parents of kids in the school, I think. Not as a community, but they did like a sort of, I went to Frank G. and had a meeting, and you heard him saying the result, and it wasn't me, like, in the cafeteria with a whole bunch of people, and they, they kind of did something similar, and sort of showed you what was going to happen, um, year after year after year. And I think the, 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 at the point of an increase on probably technically in our results in, uh, hundred thousand dollars of additional income, and the shortfall was going to amount to roughly ten percent a year, compounded for X number of years, building in the two percent, uh, increase. So, so I think that the issue may be there, I don't know why it wasn't dissipated, but-
Okay, I, I just think that maybe people who don't have kids in the school were kind of lost.
I, I know, just, right, I'm just saying, if you wanted, I think if you called them-
Yeah, and we're kind of lost, yeah, and I mean, yeah, so-
Everybody, everybody pays, even if you don't have kids.
If you want it, you can get it.
I think it's on the website.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we should probably say, well, it's only the people who have kids that are going to pay the taxes.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll get the message.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be happy to come to the next of your meetings, if you want me to, and talk, and just to talk about it.
Hey, Marcus, how can we find out what the average household village tax is for surrounding communities? I think that's an important comparison.
Yes.
You're talking about from, like, the town of Cortlandt, and, and Montrose?
Your, oh, town of Cortlandt.
Outside of Buchanan, you mean?
Cortlandt, Yorktown, Croton.
What I normally do, but, but-
I give you one locality, uh, Towne Lewisboro, which has John Jay School District.
Yeah.
A three-family ranch home, the school tax without star is eleven thousand dollars a year.
Well, but in fairness, that's represented on what year that three, that three-bedroom house was built, right?
No, that's just past year, the bill came, and it was all-
But what year was that house built?
Nineteen seventy.
That's a lot different than the ones that's built in nineteen ninety, because it's based on the last time that house was assessed, not based on-
She gets assessed every few years.
Yeah.
They don't, they haven't changed, they keep changing your assessment. It started out at forty thousand, and it's gone up to about eighty, ninety thousand right now.
So they do a village-wide reassessment every few years?
Every few weeks, and the taxes that she, um, I pay now to the Towne Lewisboro is around twenty-five hundred a year.
Her village tax on a three-bedroom ranch is twenty-five hundred?
Correct.
Today?
Today.
So we're looking to get there in nine years.
Now, she gets a discount on that, because she's senior citizen, and my father was a veteran, so she only pays fifteen hundred a year.
Right.
But the original amount is cl-, it's-
But even in nine years, that's what we're talking about going there, is the average being a, a, a-
Right, and not that far, well-
No, that's pretty great.
The only difference is her, you know, obviously, she's got no land.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, give me, hey, here's an example.
Well, it also depends on what services they're getting from that municipality.
So let me give you an exa-
That's true, because now, they don't have garbage pickup.
Right, they got, right, they have private cars.
So, so they're paying that amount, and they have to pay for the garbage pickup?
Correct, and-
It makes these numbers not look so-
So, so let me give you an-
And there's no such thing as town water out there, everybody has-
Well, well, I'll stop there.
And a stoppage.
The fact is, the fact is, when I, I can't give you a line item of houses, but anytime I've discussed this with people from other villages, or had the opportunity to see the numbers, um, generally, even a place like Croton, their village tax is-
Oh, yeah.
Double ours, for sure.
Double ours today, or double the total?
Today, today.
Well, it's double today, and by the time we, if ours double over the course of nine years, we'll be on par with them, but by then, they will have increased several percent. So, so we are, um, you know, just going to come a little closer to in line with what everybody else is already paying.
I mean, in John Jay, it's a good school district, but you're still paying.
But that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So give you an, give, just give you an example, I live in Peekskill, as everybody knows, my house is worth, it's assessed at two ninety, I bought it for three ninety, so I show you how it was, but two ninety, my city tax is two, twenty-six hundred dollars right now. That's what I pay. Peekskill, city tax. Once a week, pick up garbage, once, every six months, bulk pickup.
Barred once a month.
Twenty-six hundred dollars on, on my one, one family house.
And there's no, there's really not great services there.
Not, not like ours.
See, he's paying off with as much as my mother's house, and she doesn't have a steady.
And I have, I have a house in Peekskill, too, and it's turn-of-the-century house, six bedrooms, it's thirty-four hundred.
Which century?
Uh, the seventeen. So, and I'm, I'm just going to-
I think it's important to put the-
Yeah, you have to, what are the services, what are the comparisons?
Money, but if you're, if you were being subsidized and, and in an unrealistic place, not that anyone wants to spend their money, but at the same time, it's not as if the surrounding communities are at an average of fifteen hundred, and we're going to go to twenty-five.
Correct.
And I know all of a sudden it's a disadvantage.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And my father was a veteran.
Good point.
And it's the same thing with the school taxes, she was getting a big discount on the school, she was only paying three thousand dollars a year.
I bet you there's a lot of, we have a lot of people who are probably getting a big discount, and, and rightfully so, they've earned it, and I have no problem.
Yeah, well, now, my son was in the house with the two kids, and once they started attending John Jay, that's when the taxes went up to ten thousand.
So, but we're still, we're still going to look to mitigate, like, we're not going to accept this as is, because, you know, we've been working on, because, you know, not everybody in the village is in the same place. So, we all live here, because we can afford to live here, so, you know.
The other thing on it is, I think that our surrounding communities and our fellow citizens in Westchester probably are of the opinion that about us here, it's about time you started paying more taxes.
I heard that one, yes.
You know, not that we want to, but just, you'd, you'd wonder how much support we'll get, but so far, for all the elected officials, we've gotten very good support, haven't we, did it through, yeah, excellent.
So, but the only other thing, the next meeting on the twenty-fourth, because I know Marcus wants to finish up, I'll talk about the different mitigation that we've worked on. So Marcus was talking about the legislation we're working on, um, Steph, Stephanie has been excellent, she's been phenomenal with that, and Marcus, we met with Sandy Gaylup, so I'm just going to, just tell you quickly, if that legislation is approved, that we can tax, New York State allows us to tax those spent fuel costs as real property, where other communities do it already throughout the country, that's, that's an approximate eight hundred thousand dollars for us. Three years working on that, three years.
Teresa, then, um, to your point, that eight hundred thousand is for the village, or?
That's just the village, so, but-
That's not covering the school?
But the school benefits from it, the town benefits from, the county benefits from it.
Separate number for the school?
Yeah, oh, yeah, a lot more, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, that's, we, you know what, I think we're, we're, we've been at the point, but we're really at the point. We need support, we need, we need Albany to know, we need, you know, so we all need to work together and make this happen, because it, it affects all of us.
There's another letter we could send out to the residents, saying, this is the situation, and here's a list of three public officials in the state that we would like you to lobby, please email them, here's the email addresses, or call them, here's the phone numbers.
Or both.
You want to do both?
Or both, yeah, but I think, I think putting a, sending out a letter to that effect might help.
Absolutely.
Get a few hundred people doing it, that, that's big, you know.
Do you do direct, you know, direct door mail, or every door direct mail, that EDGN program? It's very cheap to mail to every resident in this village, it's a couple hundred bucks for a village-wide mailing EDGN.
What do we pay now, Cindy, for a-
That every door direct mail, the bulk mail, where you just pick the mail route you want to send to?
And we do bulk mail.
Yeah, how much do you pay for the counters?
Two sixty a month.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's very inexpensive to do a, a, a village-wide mailing, and you could eliminate the businesses from that if you want.
It might be a well-spent few hundred bucks. Can I just bring up something else, just in the interest, just to be fair on this? We're talking about this twenty-two percent increase, just to replace what we're losing from the pilot. We still have not done the budget, and based on increased contract costs, any other expenses that have gone up. Just in general, the budget could be going up a little bit on its own, without that, so this is not to say that the final budget, that the budget for this year will go up twenty-two percent.
That's correct.
Could be a little bit more than that.
That's correct.
All right, just wanted to be, make that point, so people are not surprised.
Does that account for any of your, your-
That's correct.
No, this is just the pilot, based on the pilot loss.
Correct.
Now, also, there's a, it, there's, should I mention the sewer thing? If we are, if the, if that goes ahead, we will be transferring the sewer bill to the water bill as a percentage of your water usage, to equate it more with, um, actual usage, as opposed to having, you know, so it's sort of use more, pay more. Right now, a house, two equal houses, one with, one person in it, one with six people in it, are using different amounts of water, different amounts of sewer, and yet they're paying the same amount because of their taxes. So it would make it be a more equitable thing in my mind. And that will be taken off of the tax bill. So the regular tax bill will be reduced by the amount we spend for sewer, and the amount we spend for sewer will show up, based on your water usage, it'll show up on your water bill. So, so we're talking about a twenty-two percent increase because of the pilot, we'll be talking about, do you remember what the percent, there's a, what the decrease was, based, if we switch the sewer bills to the-
Yeah, I didn't want to get too much into the sewer thing tonight, because it's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information.
But it's not an additional tax.
But the point is that, that the final tax rate will be a reflection of the going up from the pilot, going down because of the change in the sewer billing, and-
It's a lot going on.
It's a lot going on, but-
I think, Nick, I think that could be a little bit confusing.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to absorb this tonight.
Yeah, so just stay on this one.
Yes, go ahead, no, no, Jeremy, go ahead.
And it's an important thing to consider, are you going to be able to put in a factoring component for those people with swimming pools who use a lot of water and don't put a drop of it in the sewer system? Because what I use at my outdoor shower, what I use in my swimming pool, and what I use in my sprinkler system doesn't impact the sewer system in any capacity, but it pulls gallons from the street.
The, yeah, the issue, I-
So there's a very important thing to consider before we just flip the switch, consumption doesn't equal sewage.
Yeah, the, the issue with that one, perfect example, is Peekskill has a sewer, I, I, the last meeting, you should watch the last meeting if you have a minute, because I showed all the municipalities to have a sewer, sewer, a sewer fund, and if you fill your pool from the water tap, yes, that's going to be part of your sewer bill. What people will do, well, if you have pools somewhere, they'll buy the water, a tanker will come in and fill up the pool with the water, that's what, what they do in Peekskill, and other municipalities do that. I have an irrigation system, that goes to my tap, and I pay for that myself as part of my sewer bill. Some people do, is if they use a lot of water that way, they put a separate meter in, and then that meter's not charged as part of the sewer bill.
So you don't want to be from that?
Absolutely, if you want to do a, if you're using a lot of water-
Yeah, feel like outside.
Go outside, put a separate meter in, but, that's correct, that's correct.
You know, just, just one thing, um, I just want to expand along what Jeremy said about the school district. If you guys who don't have children in the school district, if you do go to the Anne Hutt School District website, you go to Board of Education meetings, you'll get all the meetings on, on YouTube, and Superintendent Hockrider does go over the cessation funds, he goes over what directions the school is going to be going, I mean, I have the, you know, I get those emails, because I have a child in the school district. For those of you who don't, just go to Anne Hutt School District Board of Education meetings, and they're all there for you.
You know, let me see if I can get that, that printout that Colleen was talking about, too, because then maybe we could post it on our Facebook, or, or, I don't know, put it in our newsletter with everything else, I don't know.
I get the school district emails then.
Yeah, but I think, you know, everybody should know.
Yeah, especially if you go to that-
I don't think there's a, a large group of people who are just, are not going to do that. Not going to sit there and watch a meeting after-
Oh, yeah, yeah, because this is, this is like an hour, over an hour now, you know, are people going to sit there with their popcorn and watch a regular meeting, I, I don't know, you know.
The last two, the last two we had were specifically the government.
Okay, all right, let's see if I can get some type of a, a-
You know, you got your snowbirds and stuff, they're not like taking time away from their-
No. No, you're right.
They're all from Florida to wa-
You're right.
If we get that info, we could relay it to the public, or get somebody from the schools to speak, maybe?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
I don't know how many people actually watch the meetings either, you know, I, I'm not sure.
Our meetings?
Really? Oh, well, that's not fair.
Do you have, do you have internet?
So maybe we, maybe we should, we should do a separate mailing and, and just put, attention, please read, or, you know, with a packet of information.
Do you have internet?
I don't know what else to do.
On the village website, all the meetings are there. And, and then you can go back.
It's a high definition.
Huh? The website, the website is, if you go to the website, they really fast forward, rewind, do whatever you want to do with it.
For some reason, they kept this long, because it's something to do.
Marcus, is there anything else you wanted to go over with this?
No, I think this is just to at least get the information onto the public, to the board, see what the impact is going to be next year, and I like to think for, as far as the future as I can, that's why I put that out there for you guys, to know what your impact's going to be for the next nine years, if- to know what your impact's going to be for the next nine years, if this happens this way. So I appreciate everybody's time and, you know, your understanding, and there's a lot to absorb, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Appreciate the work you put into it.
Yeah, thank you. Very good.
Thank you. I'm available anytime, so just call me anytime. Want to go over any aspect of this at all? Thank you. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
No, don't say that about him because Saturdays, Sundays, he's texting me, emailing me, so.